Right. Case by case by case.
Okay.
Every single time. Granting a conditional use in this case does not give anyone a blank check to develop even an identical setup.
Right.
There is no blank check in conditional use. It's also important to keep that in mind as we talk about this, you are being asked to grant a conditional use. This is not a rezoning. The property is already zoned commercial. You've heard it a number of times. Can I just close with this reality? Your C2 zoning designation has a number of permitted uses that are laid out, a number. Vehicle sales, I'll just start with that one. That's an example of a C2 use that is outright permitted. You understand the distinction? Outright permitted. In other words, that is a use that an individual on that site needs no authorization, no further authorization from this board to develop as a land use there. No further authorization. There are a number of uses, commercial uses, that can be brought to bear in this place. I want to point one other thing out about how this has developed over time. There have been a number of conversations about what is it going to look like? What are the hours of operation? How much security? What sort of access? Buffering, screening, and other concepts. That denotes that it's understood that this is somewhat of a unique setting. You have fairly intensive commercial activity immediately abutting a residential development, an established residential development. That is a high-level attention. And it has been understood by the applicant that a lot of legwork needs to go into what you're going to do with that piece of property. My perception is, and today, and the documents laid out before you on this table suggest that there's been a lot of legwork that's gone into it. I would encourage you to consider that it is commercial, that it is in a tense situation, and that the people who are opposed have legitimate concerns about that land use and about property values. Now, it's your responsibility to take the information that you've heard and move forward with the decision if you're prepared to do so today, and it's appropriate to take action.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
Okay, pleasure the board. I moved to vote.
Huh?
I moved to vote.
So what's your...
What you want? What's your motion?
Motion to... Let's see, how will we word this? Motion to vote for or against the conditional use request by Ollie Gavin, Inc.
Okay. Okay.
I think it is appropriate to either vote to deny the request or vote to approve.
Right, okay.
That's what I asked.
You need to make a motion.
That's what I asked.
Okay, make a motion to approve or deny. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve, Mr. Keith. Do I have a second?
You realize you just made a motion to approve the application?
No, I didn't hear what he said.
Okay.
I didn't hear what he said.
The what?
I didn't hear what you said.
Do you make a motion to approve or deny?
Do I have a motion to approve this application?
Then I'll refrain. I'll pull it back.
So what's your motion?
What's your motion? You have a motion to it. All right. Motion of Mr. Keith to deny.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wilcox. All in favor say aye.
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 Hang on.
You can ask for questions.
We'll get a little discussion too, you know.
Yeah, all right, any discussion?
Yeah, this is tough.
We've had quite a bit.
Yeah. You know, personally, I don't see anything wrong with it at all. You know, I wouldn't mind it going in my district. But, you know, I, over the weekend, I spent a good bit of time, as y'all know, I took in part of this area. And so I canvassed some of the neighborhoods, and there was a lot of people that were even unaware it was going on, as one gentleman stated before. But, and there were some who approved it, and, but unfortunately, majority were against it. And the main reason they were against it was the cause. We already have an adequate number on Old Vanny Road.
Well, I'd just like to say too, I talked to Mr. Parker. You and I spoke for what, hour and a half, two hours, I guess? And you understood from my perspective, I think it's a beautiful, beautiful facility in the right place. But unfortunately, you know, I just, you know, I feel like if it's abutting major subdivision and things like that, it's hard for me to, you know, come out and be in favor of that. It's a beautiful facility. I wish all the facilities were like that.
But you know, if this thing's going through, it's a good possibility these people could end up with a lot worse.
That's true.
It's a very good possibility.
I mean, used car lot.
Noise. Oh, I understand.
I mean, there's a lot of things to look at, and as far as discussion, there are a lot of pros and cons on what could be there, what could wind up, and everything. So...
And I'm sure that, I know Mr., Dr. Burns, I'm sure that most of the people that you've contacted all realize what could come.
Yes, sir.
So, again, I know that there probably, I don't know how many, how many people are out there, take all the politics aside from it, you know, when you take all that out from it, with it budding right up to major subdivisions and all the other mini storages out there, it's a tough one. But this is what the people want. That's the exact reason why I was in favor of doing an overlay district out there because of what the economic impact for that area. That's one of the main things that we did talk about. And as I told you, Mr. Parker...
But this hasn't got anything to do with overlay because this is only different, so we don't even need to go into that and drag it out more.
But I just want to make sure that Mr. Parker understands, great place, great piece of property that could be used for something else, and I think that that's what will come, should come. Especially if we get some, we get some resort status, come on across, come on down the way down just a little way. But like Mr. Baker said, that's for another time. Let's get...
Craig, would there be an opportunity to bring this back up if it was not passed this time?
I'm going to have to refer back to the zoning ordinance. I think there's a time limitation on how often or regularly a request can come. Is it a year, Renee?
I think that's rezoning.
Is it just rezoning? Okay, that Renee's reminding me. I'm struggling to know, I wasn't anticipating that question, Jay, so I'm not prepared today to give you that answer. We'll look it up and see for sure. But generally speaking, there are some limitations on how often or how regularly the same request can come before the board.
So even if it's voted down, it could come back up?
Generally speaking, an adverse decision relating to zoning, Mark, let me out here, you can think of something, but generally speaking, an adverse zoning determination is problematic for the applicant. In other words, you don't get another bite at that apple. This, Renee reminded me, this is a conditional use request. My interpretation then would be that unless there's something in the zoning ordinance that I'm not thinking about, that a tweak to a conditional use request, that is some sort of dramatic change in it, maybe a further setback, a higher fence, those kinds of things, can be reconsidered by the board.
You know, really, honestly, everything being said, this is strictly a zoning issue.
It's actually, it's not a zoning issue. It's a conditional use question.
Well, I know, but is it possibly zoned for this condition?
That's correct. The issue, Jared, is that it's already commercial.
Right.
We are talking about a commercial use.
Right.
We are in fact talking about a use that is not outright permitted in this zoning district.
But if it hadn't been for zoning in 2004, previously, we wouldn't be having discussions.
I think that bears repeating. There was significant forethought by the board at the time that zoning was an important consideration for the county. They fought for that. That was not an easy fight. But you see, obviously, some of the outworkings of that, I think we'd all be better off, we know that we're better off to have zoning in place, right? But I think we would, it would be a much different conversation if we didn't have zoning. But this is a natural tension that develops from zoning considerations. This is clear evidence that sometimes you are going to encounter situations where the land uses are contiguous to one another, and they may not necessarily be compatible at first blush. So what we're trying to do here is figure out if there is a way for us to allow the commercial use, even though it's immediately adjacent to residential, but put conditions on it such that the anticipated problems of a commercial development are softened or muted or lessened by the conditions. That's what's before you.
The other thing is, you know, I look at the other land that you say that we know those adjacent to it and around it. It's zoned the same way. That was my point of bringing that up. It's zoned the same way. So, I mean, where, where do we stop? Or what, they could bring, coming back in here for something else, too. I mean, we don't know what their plans are. But obviously, it's going to be something that this land's zoned for.
I would anticipate...
And our conditional use for.
I would anticipate that if the board is of a mind to deny the conditional use request in this case, then what, the signal that is sent to those adjacent property owners, Mr. Primos and Dr. Brown, is that they need to, they need to restrict their proposed land use activity to what is clearly set out in a permitted use under C2. That's the option that they're looking for.
But in some ways, you said this was a permitted use.
Actually, in this particular case, it is a permitted use in C3.
Right.
Different zoning context.
Right.
The argument being made by the applicant is that your zoning regulations allow you flexibility to consider it a conditional use in C2.
Right, that's what I mean.
All right? That's the applicant's argument. The opponent's argument is that your language says if it's permitted in C3 outright, it is not allowed in C2 at all.
Okay.
There is, there appears to be a conflict in the interpretation, not appears, there is a conflict in the interpretations. The truth of the matter is, you get to decide what your ordinance says. You. So today, you can decide that even though there's language that appears to establish a conflict, you are not going to be bound by that interpretation, but instead you're going to, you're going to decide that even though it's permitted in C3, you will allow it as a conditional use in C2, focusing then on what are those conditions?
Okay. Any more discussion? That's not, okay. I see all in favor of denying this. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Okay.
There's a vote of three to two to deny.
Three to two to deny.
Mr. President, this time I would ask that those who have been in attendance today would please leave quietly, and for the purpose of the court reporter, we will end that matter and move to the next item on the agenda.
We need to take a minute recess, too.
Yeah, okay.
I'm an aye on a nay. Nay?
No, wait.
Nay?
Yeah. Yeah, sure. The dinosaur, I didn't really know. Hey, man. Dude, that's hard.
Give me a three score there. I'm going to call and tell them.
You and me both, I can't get up now. Well, that's rough. That's a noteworthy situation.
154 Westlake. Okay, I'm going to get somebody to check on it. Westlake Palace in there?
There's your jumper right there.
The way it works. Kenny. Kenny, Kenny.
Rich Parker, I'm sorry, I'm sure you're sorry. My district was closer. It was in, walking in private.
Oh, what? The storage building? Oh. It could be a what if. Ain't we climbing the top of a storage building? There ain't nothing else around except Wilmore. That's the only thing that Wilmore's got. Ain't nobody know. What do you want?
Just talk to him. Tell him to go back.
It wasn't a little hard to that guy. But it's just like a walk-in, you open the door and you walk in? Not in C2, I mean, it would still require that conditional use. Now, it might be something. So you only send friends, grandparents, kids to them?
Well, you don't have to live for two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have our own options in here.
We're going to read.
Wow. Well, you know, I'm sorry that it didn't turn out the other way.
Why, man?
Yeah, but I mean, they can get charged for them. I mean, my office does, I don't think that probably bothers me.
Right. Of course. Wouldn't that been right? I don't know how that would work. I wouldn't have done that before. I've asked so many people, if you want that behind your house, they're like, no.
You should come up pretty quick now.
I heard that, too.
I need to, I need to pay your money. If you have stuff like that, then I'm really going to, I'm going to take me companies to get organized. So let our own stuff with the ready, and I or my office girl, yeah, we'll come back and get them up, so. It's maybe tomorrow, maybe next year. But that's fine with me.
Hey, look. I wasn't, I hadn't had a chance. See, there were professionals on my...
Really?
I wanted a professional economic examiner, ranking examiner. And he said, it's a store.
Yeah, yeah, no, man. Yeah.
No.
He didn't bring him in here. Embarrassed.
He said, he said exactly what I needed to hear.
It didn't do a bit of good for anything out there, maybe what you need to hear, but my God, the whole thing boiled down to we don't want it.
No, no, it says, how many, how many employment people we going to be bringing in?
All right. Let's get our back going, so we can get out of here. We, this is probably going to be the longest one.
Oh, no. You don't forget about the darn overlay district, Brett.
We went after 12:30?
Stuff.
Okay.
Mr. President, item G, are we going to wait on Rodney?
No, let's move on.
Okay. Item G is a public hearing on the Roger Westbury rezoning request.
Oh, is this his area?
No.
No, so this is going to be Walker's area?
Yeah.
Ms. Renee, cheat sheet. By me, okay. Ms. Westbury is asking for a rezoning initially, and if in the event the board chooses to rezone, then we will move into a conditional use request. We'll take the rezoning matter first. Roger Westbury is requesting to rezone a 9.78 parcel that is located on the south side of Highway 80 from what it is currently zoned RE1 to C2 general commercial. The property abuts the city limits of Pilahatchee to the east and to the north. The industrial park is across the highway from this property. Abutting properties to the east and north that are located inside the city limits of Pilahatchee are currently zoned I1 light industrial. The railroad adjoins the property to the south. This time, we'll open that public hearing and ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Roger Westbury rezoning request. You'll come forward, please state your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey. I didn't know which one was talking to me.
This is all of us. How are you? Good morning.
My name's Ruby Yates. My husband's Sam Yates. We're currently living at 115 South Sunset Terrace in Jackson, but we have the property that is located directly across Highway 80 from Mr. Westbury's property, and ours goes on north, I mean, west of there. It's our desire that his petition be denied because we're planning to build our permanent home there. We heard he wants to put in a car lot. We also have other family members that are purchasing part of our property to build their permanent home there also. The property just west of us is also for residential homes. We'd like to keep our property values up. So we'd appreciate your denial on his request. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I ask you one question? When do you plan on building?
As soon as we can. We would have built before now, but we were, worked about 25, 30 years getting out from under Farmer's Home.
Right.
So it's, we're getting old now, so we'd like to settle in.
Are you talking about within the year?
Oh, I'm not sure if it'd be that soon. I have a house to sell.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to the Roger Westbury rezoning request? Is Mr. Westbury present? All right. Alright. This time, we'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action on the Roger Westbury rezoning request.
Uh, motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Wilcox, I mean, Mr. Johnson. Second.
Where is this? Is this that Quonset hut?
That's correct.
And...
In that area. Where the Quonset is roughly.
Yeah. So on that side of that road is already commercial, isn't it? Adjoining it? Well, just, I'm just trying to remember from our pictures we had, wasn't there some...
It's kind of across from, uh, it's kind of across from, do you have an interest in it?
It's actually, it actually connects to the town of Pilahatchee's industrial park. The piece of property that's immediately abutting to the east is already I-1 as a part of the Pilahatchee, Town of Pilahatchee zoning ordinance. So this is county, it's RE1 in the county. City is I-1. Across the street is I-1 as a part of the Town of Pilahatchee industrial complex. The piece of property that Ms. Yates is on is this R1 property right here.
Okay.
Okay? So this subject property is actually more in line with a, a facility, what is the name of that, it's part of the industrial park is the one that's right there before you get to the red plant.
There's a color box or something in there.
Yeah, it's similar, it's close to the color box. There's a, there's actually a commercial building that is immediately across Highway 80 from this piece of property.
So Ms., Ms. Yates owns property in I-1?
No.
R1.
Oh, R1, I'm sorry, R1. I thought you said I-1.
The, uh, the, the building department conferred with Town of Pilahatchee, they're representatives of, of the town, either the building official or the mayor. Uh, I think, Walter, you may have talked to the mayor as well concerning the town's being able to weigh in on this since it is immediately adjacent to the town's corporate limits. And the town expressed its, uh, its favorability to the request as long as certain conditions are made, and we'll get to those if the board is of mind to rezone the property.
Okay, so again, motion.
I have a motion.
Second?
Second, Mr. Wilcox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay.
Mr. President, the next item, in light of the fact that the rezoning is granted, Mr. Westbury has asked for a conditional use to allow a used car dealership. He owns an existing business in Forest and he wants to relocate to Rankin County. He wants to see if he can be approved for the rezoning, which has now been done, before obtaining the, uh, going forward with detailed drainage plans and other site plan issues. If the use is approved, then, uh, the site plan architectural review would be required before the issuance of any building permits. At this time, it would be appropriate to consider whether or not the, the board is going to allow a conditional use for a car lot in a C2 commercial zone. It's amazing how that works, isn't it? Um, we spent a lot of time talking about that earlier. And so, uh, at this point, it would also be appropriate to consider conditions that should be applied to, to a vehicle sales within C2. It's an example of conditional use. It's not permitted outright. It's a conditional use.
I understand this, so let's kind of reverse just a little bit, 'cause I just heard earlier that a car lot can go in C2.
As a conditional use.
As a conditional use.
That's correct.
I was, I thought I heard, now mate, I'm, like I said, I'm getting old, but I was under the assumption they could come in there without any board action or anything, so...
That's what I heard, too.
That's what I thought I heard.
I thought I did.
Did I say that?
I'm just telling you what I heard.
Yeah, he did. You did.
I'm in error.
So now, so now all these people just left out thinking it could be a car lot out there, but now they still have to come back in front of, if they, if they were to do that.
They would have to come forward as a conditional use. That's correct.
Wonderful. I'm glad to hear that.
Not a rezoning. I, I hope I was talking about that in the context of rezoning. If I wasn't, then I...
No, I just, it came out, actually, I heard it that way, too.
Okay, then I, I'm, I'm at fault then. That, that should have been in the context of rezoning and not in terms of conditional uses.
I guess our court reporter can't get that in after the fact, but we'd love to have...
She's no longer reporting.
No, she's... Let's make sure that, to get that out to the papers. Now, I know that, let's move on to this one, so now we have to have a conditional use.
I'd leave it alone. We've stirred up enough pot now. You, you are buying lunch then.
Apparently I am. The, uh, the conditional use, uses are wide open for the board, hours of operation, screening, what the building's gonna look like, those kinds of things. So this would be appropriate time to, to discuss what the conditional uses are.
Is this property gonna border the residential property to the side? I would suggest that we do make sure there's plenty of buffer area.
It, it doesn't actually apply to any residential that I'm aware of. It kind of makes, doesn't choke down to...
Now, the, to the, to the west of it...
The building's going on the opposite side of the Quonset hut.
Okay.
To the west of it's residential, isn't it?
It is, but this building would be, um, placed closer to the east side of the property going toward Pilahatchee.
But he's gonna put cars everywhere and lights and all that. I, I was saying that we need a buffer zone between the residential area.
The light, I can see the problem, I can see.
There's only one manufactured home on the west side. That's all that's there.
Okay, alright. Have we discussed conditional uses with Matt at all?
No.
Other than, other than the, the brick. I think that's, that has been discussed a couple of times, Walter, that, uh, that the board wanted to see, actually, we need to see a site plan, and you were telegraphing, as best I recall, that we would like to see brick on the front of the building, for sure.
On three sides.
Three sides.
Yeah.
And lighting, you know, needs to be contained in his lot.
Okay.
I liked the lighting deal that showed a minute ago.
Yes.
Does he write?
Yeah.
How would you, how would, how would you word that on the lighting?
Number one, brick on three sides. Number two, a lighting plan that, uh, that is conducted by someone with expertise in that area to determine whether or not there's gonna be any bleeding, I think that was the word they used.
Yeah.
Uh, to adjacent property. Number three, uh, if there are gonna be any issues related to hours of operation, it'd be appropriate to consider those now.
Has he suggested, are we already discussed that, Walter?
Not really.
Nope.
We can say appropriate hours of, of operation as determined as a part of the site plan review.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, can we do this at a later date to make sure to enact everything that we have to put in there, since he's not here?
Satisfactory hours of operation as a part of site plan review. Do we have any issues related to parking, how that's gonna be set up, or is there anything about that?
You want asphalt, though? They want asphalt?
Absolutely.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, that's what we've been...
Okay. Satisfactory parking plan as part of site plan review.
And push towards not the gravel, but the asphalt.
When we have, when we have an opportunity to address all these things?
I'm just, I'm making it as a, a part of the actual conditional use permit itself.
'Cause we can make sure he does all the shrubbery and all that later on.
Correct.
Hours, lights.
In, in other words, he will not get a permit of any kind until the board is satisfied as to what the plan is.
Okay. Now, what about, and, and this is, and this is just me, for the individuals that will be building across there, security measures as far as fencing and all that stuff, to make sure that it's not just a...
I don't think any of them have a fence around it.
It's got barbed wire around it now.
Okay. Well, I'm sure that...
Adequate security plan as a part of site plan review.
Correct, so people won't just be coming out there hanging out. Of course, I'm sure if I were him, I would want a security fence and everything else, make sure at night they don't come out there start driving off in their vehicles.
This is Rankin County, man.
I know.
Right.
Ken keeps them straight, don't you think?
The sheriff is offended by that. Okay.
So I guess...
Anything else, Walter?
How do you want us to do this then? Because we really, on that particular one, we really got some, uh, gotta get it all worked out.
Actually, you can go ahead now with the, we've introduced conditions as a part of the process. So, uh, there won't be a permit issued unless and until all of those issues are satisfactory to the board.
Yeah, but we need, uh, it sounds like we need to think about and make sure...
Could be additional. We're gonna have opportunity.
He comes back for site plan architectural review.
Yeah, we could approve this and with possibility...
It's all conditioned.
With possibility of additional.
It comes back.
Right.
Alright, Mr. President, if you will, I'd make a motion to, uh, grant this conditional use request for Roger Westbury.
Second.
Okay, motion from Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. Wilcox. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I oppose. Okay.
Uh, uh, letter aye, under my section, public hearing for the Oak Grove Part V rezoning map correction, Old Fanon Road. Map corrections are allowed where there's an error in the mapping, uh, the way that it was initially delineated. The county is initiating a, this is a county request to initiate a zoning change, zoning map change for Oak Grove subdivision, Part V, due to a map error. Oak Grove subdivision parts one through four are all zoned R1B. Part V is shown incorrectly on the map as A1. This time, it'd be appropriate, uh, for a motion to correct the map.
Motion to approve.
Second. That's true.
I'm sorry. I, I should have asked if there was anybody had any discussion.
I don't think, did we...
Go ahead.
The only thing it is, is it was incorrect on the map. There's nothing changing to your neighborhood at all. It was just, whenever we did our mapping, we put the wrong initial on the map, so that's all.
The reason I was asking is some of this is flood zone, and I don't know if that had any effect on it. Uh, also, on my taxes, which is changing.
Doesn't affect anybody's taxes at all. Until the use of the property is actually changed, the tax stays exactly what it's being assessed at. So if it's, if it's currently A1, uh, then a zoning map revision could result, if there are properties there, or if there are properties inside.
It's all built out? It's all built, yeah.
It's been, it's been, uh, it's been classified incorrectly. It's not agricultural property. So it, there is the possibility that with this action, there will be an adjustment to the, uh, to the amount of added tax assessed to that property. Uh, if it's, it's supposed to have been classified as R1B, it will now be taxed as R1B. There won't be any going back and picking up old taxes, but moving forward, it will be correctly taxed at what it's supposed to be.
Well, since you brought up that point, how does it now, well, if it is, now, I know they updated the flood plain map here last year. Is that gonna impact anything?
Not gonna impact anything to flood maps and over leagues and things like that.
It's a stone that's there.
That's actually unrelated to county zoning. That's a federal program. It's administered in four minutes years after a clean up.
Now, this was just a map correction, though.
But our taxes may go up.
Uh, yeah, I guess...
They've been assessed incorrectly. Uh, then with this correction, uh, there's a possibility that it will be reclassified now. So going forward, uh, I would think that this would probably apply to 2016 and forward. It's possible that... Yeah, it's possible that, that they've already picked up on the, the actual use of the property versus what it's owned, and that your assessment will change significantly because they've already addressed it. So you might wanna step in to the assessor's office.
John Sullivan's office?
Right out.
In the corner.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, did we take action?
Uh-uh, we didn't, you got a...
I may have most approved.
And I seconded. Yeah, motion by Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Keith. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, sorry about that. I just assumed it was a no-brainer.
I did, too.
Yeah.
My, my bad. I don't think we've ever had anybody show up on a map correction. Alright, item J is a public hearing on the Telus self-storage Harbor Gate dimensional variance request, 408-7 Highway 43 North, District 2. Uh, let me get to my page. Tell, I'm running out of gas.
Is he adding, adding one?
Telus self-storage Harbor Gate is proposing an expansion of the existing mini storage facility located at 408-7 Highway 43 North. They plan to add two storage buildings at the rear of the property. It's a 4.20 acre parcel zoned I-1. Mini storage facilities are permitted in I-1. The applicant is requesting a five-foot variance from the required 20-foot side setback requirements. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Telus self-storage Harbor Gate dimensional variance request. Anyone in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Okay, that motion's approved.
So move.
Second motion. Uh, which one, no, you did?
I did, yeah.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Keith.
Is...
Any discussion?
Yeah, is the reason why we're having to do this, uh, public hearing is for, just for the dimensional variance? Is that what it's...
The number of feet of...
Yeah, the dimensional variance, okay.
And he could, just for the record, put a strip joint at the end of it, you know, since it is zoned industrial.
What's that?
It is Highway 43.
Okay.
As a condition.
Thank you. Court recorder got that one. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item K is a public hearing on the Scott Purser conditional use request, 198 Andrew Chapel Road, District 4 parcel. Mr. Purser's requesting a conditional use to build a 20-by-66 metal building with living quarters and a personal shop at 198 Andrew Chapel Road. He had a manufactured home of the property. It was destroyed by fire a few months ago. This is a 2.50 acre parcel zoned RE1. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Scott Purser conditional use request. Anyone? Mr. President, there's no one here to speak in opposition. At this time, we'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Is this for a business?
What, yeah, what is this?
It's not a business, right?
I didn't wanna buy another trailer, and it would just benefit me to have a house there. And I don't see building a home there as being a good choice because it's directly across the street from the gas plant.
Yeah.
So I don't see myself getting much money out of my house being there.
I, I just don't think you can put a, you're not supposed to have a house and reside inside of a business.
It's in a business.
It's not a business.
Okay, just make sure you don't, you know.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, um...
So all this gonna go through you guys and everything's, okay?
Mr. Purser, just for the record, um... How, I think you ran, you answered your next question. How long do you think you'll need before that trailer is completely cleared off the property?
I'm planning on getting it cleaned up this Friday.
Is this in your area?
Alright, if, if the board is of mind to say, let's have that cleaned up within 30 days, would that be enough time to be able to clear that property? Alright, Mr. President, with that understanding, uh, and we can make that a part of the motion to approve here, uh, that the property, the site itself, would be cleared within 30 days, and we would ask Renee and John to sort of keep an eye on that for us. Mr. Purser, they'd be willing to allow the conditional use requests that you've asked for, with the understanding the property has to be cleared within 30 days, okay? Alright, very good.
Okay.
Clear on that, Mr. President?
Yes.
I would ask for a motion to that effect.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Wilcox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, item L, public hearing on the Chandrel Long conditional use request, 157 Bryant High Street. This is District 4 property. Ms. Long is requesting a conditional use permit to move her 1997 manufactured home from 129 Bryant High Street to 157 Bryant High Street. The property is a 1.48 acre parcel zoned RE1. She's renting the property at 129 Bryant High and wants to place the home on the property that she owns at 157 Bryant High. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Chandrel Long, Long conditional use request. I don't see anyone at all, so we will close that public hearing. Mr. President, it'd be appropriate to take action.
This is on the same street?
Motion approved. So this is the one where the road makes a hard dogleg left, and she's going to continue on across her mother-in-law's property to a lot, and Renee's office worked with my office to make sure that she had appropriate access to Bryant High Street from that location.
This wasn't the beauty shop, was it?
Aye, no, sir, I think that's a different one.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Wilcox, second by Mr. Bishop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose.
The last item under my section, Mr. President, item M, is a consideration of the sheriff's office request to declare two Robotech's Avatar III tactical robots as sole source items pursuant to Mississippi Code Annotated, Section 31713, little m, little 8, and pursuant to the AG's opinion that is attached to the agenda, and consider authorizing the sheriff to purchase one tactical robot with the county purchasing the second tactical robot. The estimated cost of the robot is, or both robots is attached, and we're asking for authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Wilcox. Any more, any discussion?
What's, Ken, how much was that, the second one we're buying? Approximately 25,000, sorry? Okay, what I thought.
It's 30 something, actually. I think it's like 36.
Okay.
All in favor?
The one the sheriff's buying is somewhere between 60 and 70.
Right.
65. And ours is 35, 37.
And that was all through drug money, too, so...
Well, the first one is drug money, the second one is county funds.
Right.
We're not addressing how the sheriff's going to pay for it. We're addressing the second one.
I read vote on it.
Okay. I got a motion, second. Any more discussion, Mr. Wilcox? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose.
Before we move off of our building issues, just for clarification, on the car wash sign, either the dude needs to build the building or take it down. But when do we get the opportunity to make sure he's going to put all brick and do everything that, what we agreed to originally?
We're waiting on him to submit the detailed site plan and the, then he'll come for an architectural review.
Was he here today?
No, sir.
Well, I would like to suggest y'all contact him to hurry up, really take the sign down.
Well, now, he submitted something showing brick, just a little preliminary file. I'll shoot it to you if you'd like.
No, 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 I'm just ready to move forward.
I'll tell him.
Okay.
And I want to be, I want to help clarify something so that there's no confusion. Renee and I were working on this particular matter together. I was concerned about the timing of the request.
Yeah.
So I suggested that maybe we all have a conversation about that with this individual to see if there was any possibility that it could be delayed for some period of time. He came back and said that he would like to move forward with it.
Okay.
And on that basis, he's only recently been told that he needs to get a move on.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So it's not Renee's fault.
Alright.
It was really sitting in my lap and...
Well, I mean, he just put that sign up a couple of months ago, or three months ago, and doing all this advertising. As I went around the neighborhood, talked to folks, there were more people upset about that during car wash than they were in storage buildings.
Putting everything over here.
Just because of what they thought it was going to be.
Okay, Ms. Laura Oster.
I'm going to be really brief.
You sure have been sitting over there patiently.
And quiet.
There's been a lot going on. First item I have is approval to award the lease purchase in the amount of $739,400 for the unit system, and that will be with Trustmark for six Mack tandem dump trucks at 1.83% or less, and authority to execute the documents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose.
Second item is request of the authority to purchase three used Chevrolet Tahos, one 2012-year model in the amount of $17,800, and two 2013-year models in the amount of $18,500 for the sheriff's department, from the Missouri Highway Patrol, and authority for, under Sheriff Kim M. Broome, Deputy Stan McClendon, Billy Lord, and Steve Weaver to pick up the vehicles and pay any travel-related expenses.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Wilcox, second by Mr. Keith.
Can we amend that and just take M. Broome out?
Yeah. Any discussion?
He might like that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Additional business?
I got something, Mr. President.
I promise I'm going to be real short and sweet.
What you got?
And I just wrote this myself, so my integrity means everything. I've been on this board for a little over seven years, and I've heard accusations that I've been using county vehicle to campaign with, so at this time, I'd like to turn over my keys and my county vehicle to the comptroller, which should be a savings of about $30,000 that should be able to purchase that robot, so... Anyway, I will be still the supervisor in my personal truck, which will not cost one dime to the taxpayers.
I've got a question. How you figure it's going to be $30,000 worth?
Well, I figure because...
Somebody's going to be using it, I assure you.
Well, it's not going to be me.
I get it.
Let's put it that way.
Well, I hate you feel you need to do that, man.
Well...
I don't believe any of us question your integrity.
I appreciate that, but I'm not going to have anyone out there even questioning my integrity, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, let's take it from a motion.
Can I trade in the marquee?
He wants to upgrade. He wants the truck.
He wants the truck.
Pick up.
Yeah, I'm not running, yeah, I can use it for a lot of things.
No.
Just kidding, guys.
I believe the recorder's still on, Mr. Keith.
Just kidding.
Anything else?
When do we meet again?
May the 15th, 9:00 a.m.
Oh, I do want to ask now, we did verify, you are going to go make sure the guy's putting in a self-pond and all that's being done correctly on the storage unit?
Yeah, Old Fannin Road.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, now, from what I know, they have a part of construction, they haven't known that.
Well, how are we going to get all that communicated?
Well, I'll be communicating with the engineer. So he finally submitted a drawing. We met out there with the engineer and with the owners, and looked at what they could do in there as far as that particular pond. It's not an ideal situation at all because it's going to hold.
Well, if they have to take out part of what they're using, that's on them, you know, I mean, so...
Yeah, I understand that, but they can put in, based on the numbers, they can put in, it's so the out there holds the water.
Okay.
It contains the water.
Alright. And Renee told me that, well, you had left out of the room when we brought this up our last meeting, but, because we really didn't leave anyway to bring it back up, but she said he's coming to bring a check?
That's what he said. I called and talked to him. He said he has started working on it, though. He said he's got the spillway in, the drain pipe in, and he's starting to dig out a three-foot section.
Yeah, basically what he's doing in there is putting a levee or whatever you want to call it, out, draw along the edge of the ditch that it was discharged into, and he put the pipe in that little levee for the water to drain out. It'll just drain out slower than that's a runoff.
Okay.
And then it's going to grade on back, it was going to be about three foot deep at the deepest point, and then virtually phased to nothing. One of my concerns was he had some units at the back, and it crowded those units, but based on his drawings, they would still have the use of units on the back part of the property.
Is this the one that built without permits and everything like that?
Yeah.
And I did want to clarify, and I didn't, we had so much discussion on the other public hearing that I did here, one individual say that we didn't have any, we had no opposition to that. Well, I know a couple of us brought up the fine aspect of it.